It's amazing. One person exists, nothing.
Um, okay, I'll just, I'll just take Brooks and ask him.
He said it's like April.
Um. March week, you know, things would be different.
You'll have more layers.
School gets out, last two years is the twenty.
The head was adjusted for that.
So we usually just roll out and a vote card changes. And twenty five percent should be saved.
That might fit up with that for other families.
It's pretty much true.
It hurts a little bit.
I was going to be up there, I was tired.
I was sitting there, he drove all day long.
He's making me look big.
Well.
Yeah.
I didn't realize my play.
Yeah.
My could have been a lot. People don't mean it. I've never been like your man. I thought I was getting cheated. I'm not here to laugh.
I got eighteen millimeters from her body and soon that guy.
Everything goes smooth.
They do the pills.
Yeah.
Uh, during the holidays, she's been around some nights.
There's definitely a lot of them. It's not over.
Managing homes that she's come back, she went.
I remember when she was first time.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
I'm getting no idea.
As you will see here, what you want to go through the try-ins. Well, I'm going to make up to them.
I was, I was, I was, I was really just forgot some chicken times because you know that's my. But there's. I had, I had barbecue.
Oh, yeah.
Is it good?
Okay, okay, alright.
You got a bad word.
Nice to be able to, I'm gonna work for you anyway, you know, so that's something.
Okay.
It's a hot commodity, Jerry.
No, no. I'm not sure if it's very.
Oh, no. No. No, no, no. I'm not going to watch any of them like that. I'm just talking about you.
I read about them.
Mm-hmm. That's secret.
I think that one.
Okay. We're in my kitchen.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
So he is weird, you know?
There you go.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know.
Yeah.
Oh, so I'm like, especially better.
He actually really good. So they come in.
No way.
Good?
Pretty good, yeah.
No.
We both relax.
No, sorry.
That's all right. Hey, you go in.
You don't get old with woodshed, you.
Say it with you.
Thank you.
Are you ready?
I'm ready.
You're all right.
This was my. Sure, you're a fee. I like people looking at me.
Don't you know, there's a first hour. What he does or.
There are a few questions.
Yeah. I feel good.
We teach.
Should be good already, but feel, feel free. I did, I checked it earlier. Now, my batteries are gonna run out, but you know. So I'm not the camera.
Appreciate it sometimes.
I appreciate it. I was like, I was like, you made me, I was like, I'm pissed off, oh my God.
Yeah. Cheers.
I don't want to be gross. What are you? I think that.
This is a new and more point.
I'm sure the agenda.
I don't think so.
I don't think I'm paying them.
That is a sub when you turn.
It was the whole one. You were like. All right, let's call a meeting, Lord, if you would, please stand. For prayer, for non-same, for political reasons. Dear gracious heavenly Father, we thank you this day, all the many blessings. Thank you for giving us this opportunity once again to kind of, uh, we pray that we do everything in accordance with our will. And we pray for the sick, uh, that is close to us. And we pray that maybe the ones not enrolled in that group much want to help, will be like, well. We pray for men and women that are serving the country, especially the ones on foreign soil, that you put by hand and mouth. And comfort them and bring them back home safe and sound and be like, well. We pray for the families that have lost someone, let's comfort them as long as we know how. We pray we always do everything in accordance with our will, forgive us of your sins, Christ, and we pray, amen. Bruce, you ladies, and please leave your prayers.
Please leave them.
Goodbye, the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two Bruce's.
Sir.
So I had a few Bruce's.
Oh, I didn't know.
I was gonna tell Mr. Matt to use a little bit there.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Eller, for your mess.
Sorry.
Have no, apologize, job well done. All right, uh. Roll call, Ms. Fields.
Alderman Cleveland.
Present.
Alderman Bill.
Present.
Vice Mayor Dotson.
Present.
Alderman Elder.
Present.
Alderman Linder.
Here.
Alderman Lindner.
Here.
I'm present.
All, all presidents, uh, need a motion to approve the minutes last month's meeting. Motion made by Alderman Bill Lindner.
Here.
Second by Alderman Rex Dell. In discussion. All four of the motion led over to say a aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so that's how the motion pass. I do have some additions, uh, to the agenda. Uh, item number one, uh, Ms. Grassroots Planning, Ms. Amanda Maynard, to talk about, uh, the low bids in the, uh, uh, homes that, uh, have great project. Uh, item number two also is the accept the bids, uh, for the pickleball courts, uh, that will be open May fifteen. Item number three is the ARPA slash retail coach. Uh, item number four is the, uh, city pool employees and supervisors. Those are the items I'm asking to be, uh, added on to, uh, the agenda.
Motion to add those, you pitched it for.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Ken Dotson.
Second.
Second by Alderman, uh, John Clough. In discussion. All four of the motion led over to say a aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so that's how the motion pass. Item number one, uh, we have no old business, so we'll go straight to the new business for downtown revitalization. Uh, Chairman, Mr. Jean again.
Yes, sir, I don't have anything reported this time to Mr. Evans. I'm pulling our boxes.
Ms. Cancel, here. Okay, come on up, Ms. Evans.
So I've got, uh, four items to report to you tonight. Uh, regarding the last reading, uh, we shared with you that we had applied for a TBA, TBA investor pre-grant to this work in the, uh, remaining lot in the city, city industrial park. We told today that we'll know by the end of this week whether or not we can make the, uh, the second cut. And that will, if we have, then TBA and their consultants will come and will extend it, review the site. And, and, and so we'll, you know, know the answer to that by, uh, by the end of this week. Uh, our consultants are on the South Street project submitting construction plans to that special regional commission, uh, on Friday. Um, we expect that review not to take terribly long, uh, but, uh, we're making really good progress on that project. Uh, actually, we're, we're doing much better on that project than we are on our, our two, two lot project, as far as, uh, speed of, of progress for sure. Uh, that gets us into the, uh, two projects, and that is the, uh, the courthouse square, uh, courthouse grounds project. Our consultants making really good progress on that. Uh, we exchanged some back and forth today. They are getting very close to final construction documents to submit to TDOT on that project. And, uh, we expect that to happen probably, uh, before your next meeting. Uh, our TDOT sidewalk project is moving slowly, as it has since its inception in their city attorney. We tell you that, that, uh, we're bogged down now in trying to determine what the requirements are of TDOT for temporary construction easements and final access easements. We're going to arrange a conversation with, uh, TDOT, right away folks in Chattanooga and, and the attorney later this week and see if we can get that resolved. Uh, we think it's a fairly simple, uh, situation. Our consultants think that it may not be so simple, and so we're gonna let TDOT tell us directly, uh, uh, what they're gonna require us. You know, and again, these are construction easements that are about the size of the desk shall sit at, you know, they're not, uh, ten acres out somewhere. And so we're trying to make those as, as clean and simple as, as we've talked about before. But, uh, uh, that's where we are with all those projects, again, uh, good, uh, good progress on, uh, especially South Street and on the, uh, courthouse plaza project. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Evans? John Willman?
Thank you.
Item number two is our airport chairman, Jason Duke. Jason, I'm sure Jason's here.
I want to start out and go over some of the findings from our recent economic impacts that have been done for the airport. This is about like a forty-seven slide presentation that I pared down to just the seven most important slides. So I'd just say that you've got forty slides. If you want the entire presentation, I'll make sure we give it to you.
Okay.
So. So first slide to talk about is, uh, there are seventy-eight general aviation and commercial airports in Tennessee. You know, Livingston's on the map. Livingston is the largest airport north of I-40 in our part of Tennessee. The study that we looked at, three things, we looked at all import impacts and also impacts done to the community and then visitor spending impacts, which are primarily Overton County side of that. What this was used for was to calculate the total jobs at the airport indirectly and directly contributes to the community, also payroll and value added to the community, which produces to the right, the net economic contributions. Now, this was done by three consulting firms, uh, verified all three of those, that would have been Kenley Horn, EVP, and Garter, and then also input from TDOT. So what it looked at is the number of jobs, and these are not just jobs at the airport. These are jobs, a portion of factories and businesses that depend on the airport itself, payroll related to that, value added to the community, and business revenue. Business revenue example, if somebody flies, they're gonna go to Del Hollow Lake and they go to food line and they buy groceries for the weekend. That adds up, businesses, projects we have at the airport, people come eat in town, buy things in town, et cetera. So the data for this, which I verified strongly, uh, was collected in two thousand nineteen, and then it's compiled and produced in two thousand twenty. Because of COVID, the project slowed down, took a long period for us to get these data. And here's what it produced for Livingston. Based off two thousand nineteen data, there are seven full-time jobs. Now, that is seven full-time, so it takes, like I said, pieces of a third of a person here, half a person here, et cetera. Seven full-time jobs contribute to the Livingston just off the airport itself, with about three hundred thirty-one thousand for payroll. The community business revenue off the airport is about three quarters of a million dollars. This is what three different consulting firms using local data, pilot surveys, FAA data on what aircraft flew into the airport, et cetera, attracted this. Something I get a lot of them have is small, but just know that Livingston's in the middle. Um, something I get a lot of this, all that airport's just a country club, just a bunch of rich people. Well, we have twenty planes based at Livingston, only one is a twin, which is an expensive aircraft. We have nineteen other aircraft with an average value of about eighty thousand dollars. So if you go to any boat dock on Del Hollow, I'm sorry, they've got more value there than they've got to Livingston Airport. I've never been able to hang out and find out where this country club is, so. The flights you can see here, these are primarily business flights into Livingston. Those are non-stop signals flown primarily for business into Livingston. You're gonna see flights from Miami, from Dallas, from San Antonio, Cleveland, Chicago, et cetera. And you're gonna ask me, well, do people not come from the West Coast to Livingston? Yes, they do, but you might stop and use the restroom at one of those airports before you get to Livingston, which is why you'll see the distance planes from the Livingston. So I've got the full benefits of the study that I can share to anyone who'd like to have that. And I will go ahead. And also, you have a two-page flyer that we had copies given to you, which is a front, back, which is a brochure that can be given out to show the direct benefits of the Livingston Airport and the community. And now we move on to item two. Item two for me, this Saturday, May fifth, from nine AM to three PM, is a fly-in, it's a cruise-in at the airport. There's food, there'll be cars, there'll be helicopter rides, airplane rides, there'll be all the different life flight, Erling or Vanderbilt. Um, a lot of business aircraft will be flown in, there'll be some planes to see, and there'll be music. It's a free day for the community and by all you come. For the past couple decades, I've spent the entire day flying people, and this is the first year I won't have to, because our new flight school operation, Dicey Aviation, is bringing two aircraft in, and they will provide the airplane runs. And so I will spend all my time on the ground, meeting and greeting, talking to people. So I invite all the aldermen to come, anybody that always to come, we're watching this, and I also make the same invitation to the entire county commission. So I would like to show folks where our projects are, the fuel farm, everything you hear me talking about, you'll understand a lot better if I can walk you and show you where it's at and answer your questions on that. Um, third item is the city and the county airport operating agreement. Remember, I brought that up last month. Um, after that, I presented it to the county budget committee, the county commission, I also presented it before the full county commission. And they're taking some time to deliberate and research further before they make their decision, so it's the balls in their court right now. Uh, my next item, I mentioned Dicey Aviation. I got my license at Livingston nineteen ninety-three to become a private pilot. We used to turn a lot of pilots out of Livingston, we had it a long time. Dicey Aviation is based out of Somerset, Kentucky, they have six aircraft. They provide private and commercial instruction, instrument, VFR, uh, they offer the full package, and so they are locating operations in Livingston, and they hired Clay Johnson right away to be a full-time instructor for that.
Which is, which is a local.
Which is a local, also, there's another job to add to that. And so, and the neat thing about this, in Livingston, we're going to be able to turn out private and commercial pilots, and, uh, one of the operations at Cookeville Airport, Aaron Tippin's operation recently, I believe, is no longer doing instruction, and so the demand is through the roof here. I think Clay had a dozen students and day one, already signed up. So it's going to be a good operation for us. We have no liability relating on the insurance, and we are not paying that company, they are not paying us, they're operating here, sending the train pilots to our benefit with community. And he will also be at the fly-in on Saturday for anybody to come be parading. Next item would be a twenty-three, twenty-four budget request. We have four projects, which I'll provide full detail for twenty-three and twenty-four. Uh, two of those projects involve land acquisition and fencing after the land acquired, and the other two projects are serving the relocation of the fuel farm, and then the actual relocation and construction of the fuel farm. That's so we can service larger planes, jets, and large twins for fueling operations that we can't serve now, and will go to Cookeville across when they take on fuelers result, so we'll be able to avert that. We all, we were able to acquire ninety-five percent funding, and so the local match is only forty-six thousand dollars, six hundred fifteen, which will be split between city of Livingston and Overton County. So the entire share is twenty-three thousand. So when all y'all see in the news that we spend a million dollars for the airport, no, we haven't. Ninety-five percent of that came from federal funding and state funding. We only are responsible for two and a half percent city, two and a half percent for the county. We do have one request, uh, needs approval by the aldermen tonight, and that would be for, we have those four parcels we have to acquire of land, and we have a counter offer for the first parcel, and this parcel would be Virginia and Ray Sawyer's parcel. It is five point four-two acres. This is the only parcel that's going to lose access, but they will just have to put a new access road. I want to be clear, anyone that has existing access is not losing it. We have two landlocked lots, but the two that do have access, one will not lose it, and this one has to make a new, quote, driveway access road. The offer was eighty-four thousand, one hundred, and it was assessed and revisited, and the counter offer was eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy cents. And of that price, ninety-five percent's coming out of federal money. So this would be, this is within the ten percent administrative settlement range, and so I would recommend that the alderman purchase this five point four-two acres from Virginia and Ray Sawyer for eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy cents.
Okay, uh, the chairman has recommended this, uh, we've had our engineers, uh, along with someone that has sit down with this, uh, family, this is an agreement that, uh, we, uh, cannot, so. Uh, let's make a motion to.
Motion of Bruce.
Motion by Vice Mayor Ken Dotson, uh, to accept the recommendation of Chairman Jason Duke, Dr. Duke, by late regulations. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, uh, by Mr. Alderman Bruce Eller, in discussion.
Did you say we just had to come up with ten percent, or we have to come up with eighty-four, five percent?
Now, we're paid, uh, two point five percent city, two point five percent county, so you'll pay two point five percent of the eighty-eight, eight fifty-three.
How much is that? Ten percent for the revival.
Right, uh, about four, five hundred, yeah.
Roll call, Bruce.
Alderman Linder.
Yes.
Alderman Elder.
Yes.
Alderman Dale.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dotson.
Yes.
Alderman Lindner.
Yes.
How do I come up?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion pass. Any other business, Mr. Duke?
Just two more items. Another eighty-eight thousand, just for the record, fifty-eight thousand, that was damaged because they had to build the access road, so the land was thirty thousand of that eighty-eight. Uh, the last few items are, this Thursday in Murfreesboro is the annual airport capital infrastructure planning meeting, which is great excitement. Uh, Mayor Hayes has conveniently demurred to County Executive Barlow, who will accompany me for that day of finding figures. So that's where we take all these dozens and dozens of projects and figure what we're gonna get, how much money we're actually gonna get for Livingston. Lots of excitement. Uh, also, the parking lot will soon be repaved at the airport, half paid by county, half by city, and the sidewalk replaced, and the fuel pump has been awarded in Murdeway installation. The last update from me on the bipartisan infrastructure law terminal rehabilitation money, I'm waiting for an update from the FAA to see if we were accepted for that funding. If not, we have confirmed a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars in two thousand twenty-two, a hundred and forty-five thousand in twenty-three, and the same for twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, about three quarters of a million dollars, which I'm trying to work to redirect for full rehabilitation of existing airport terminal and the main hangar. Um, I've traveled a dozen and dozens of area airports, most of them have taken advantage of this in the past, and our airport needs a complete terminal update. We have the same construction as the Jamestown Airport, which is recently renovated, the front portion of their airport, and this will give us an all-new appearance terminal and main hangar. And it will be funded ninety-five to a hundred percent, some parts it will be funded to a hundred percent, our max liability price of the total project is five percent shared with the city and the county. So the money's out there, it's just not easy for smaller airports for us to get. That's it.
Any questions, uh, for Chairman Duke? No questions. Job well done, Dr. Duke. Next, uh, we have on our agenda, item number three, utility bill changes, uh, Ms. Sherry Jolly. I thought that would come.
I gave everybody an envelope with, uh, our new bills in there. They look so much better than the postcards we had, they're more updated. Just the information on there is your April bill, which you already had and paid, but that's what it would have looked like.
So we have, uh, uh, updated our billing system, the local programs networking system, uh, as Ms. Jolly has said, uh, we, you'll no longer, uh, be getting a postcard. Uh, if you do get a postcard, it'll be one more time before we actually go online, but we think, uh, we're gonna be online. Uh, and, and it will come, uh, I wanted to make sure, and I wanted to, did you bring an envelope? Well, the envelope that everyone has got, that will come, uh, the city of Livingston, uh, on there, uh, it will be two, uh, areas, it'd be to the, uh, customer, and, but it will clearly be marked city of Livingston, so do not throw away. Uh, you will not receive any more, uh, with the exception, possibly one more, uh, postcard that has your water bill on it, okay? And, uh, we do have some samples here to give to the local media, uh, that we'd like, uh, for you to take and put in, uh, both newspapers, uh, where folks will, uh, see this bill when it starts coming out. So I think we have OCN and the Enterprise here, is Enterprise here? All right, okay. So, uh, anyway, Wayne, we get you one before we leave. Anybody got any questions for Ms. Jolly? Come on, give her some goodness.
I think mine's a little high.
Will this increase postage? Will this increase our postage?
Yeah.
Stuff as well, I've mentioned.
Yeah. It'll increase it.
Share, push your button, please.
The postage will be around twenty-eight hundred dollars, but the postcard we mailed last month was twenty-two hundred dollars, so it's not bad.
Word.
Yeah, you get a return envelope and all of that, customers will, this will be so much better.
And the, the, one of the great things, if you'll flip over on the back of the invoice, it just gives you a lot of great information on how to pay the bill, give us some bigger information, uh, payment terms, payment options, water quality report, uh, and the EE, uh, equal water opportunities, uh, also, uh, on the back there. So there's just a lot more information, any messages, uh, that we want to get out to our customers, if you remember, we'll try and get folks to come in and fill out their, uh, Q and A, um, on their, about their water pipes that PDEC is making us do. I'm sure we will have that on the back of our invoice eventually. Uh, so we think it's, uh, it's going to be a change, and it's a, it's a positive change. Thank you for the information, Ms. Y'all. And, uh, see, Miss Sherry, will you make a copy of this? Make a copy of that. And for us to see. Just a sample of it.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, no, this is a sample.
I'm glad.
Yeah. It says. Thank you. All right, so with us also is item number four, cyber security, Ms. Mackenzie Walton. Ms. Walton is here by request. Her son today had surgery, so she was unable to be present. But she's with us via Zoom. Ms. Walton, are you present?
I am, yes, sir.
All right, good. We hear you loud and clear. So.
Perfect.
Yeah, let's talk just a little bit about cyber security, which I understand is a new law with the state of Tennessee for all municipalities, come effective July one.
Yes, so recently the House passed a, um, a bill in accordance with the Controller's Office requiring any city that has a utility department to put certain things in place for cyber security, as well as to write a plan. And I work with BC Three. We are TMLs, so Tennessee Municipal League partner. We do all of their IT and cyber security and all that stuff for them. And so we all got together and have offered services to the city, to the different cities across the state of Tennessee, to put packages together that will check mark not only just what the Controller's Office is requiring, but also fill the insurance requirements that are starting to get rolled out through the PAP. So you will, you'll benefit. Not only will you survive the Controller's Office, but you'll also be able to be covered underneath that increased cyber security policy. You guys just have to apply for it. But neither here nor there. And so I met with Mayor Hayes last week, and we kind of just did a rundown of everything currently going on in the city, the different things that you guys were apparently getting through CyberTech and not getting. And we did our recommendations. And so what we recommend for the City of Livingston is to, first off, my first step is to go ahead and take the current email platform that you guys are on and convert it over to the government cloud. Essentially, what that does is that, exactly what it sounds like. Instead of your all's emails going through China servers or anything like that, it passes it all in the United States servers. And it's a government server. So only municipalities, police officers, or police stations, so on and so forth, can have the, have that, have that server. So we're going to do that. And then also, we are going to support the Microsoft 365. Again, you guys are already paying on average about thirteen dollars a month just to have Microsoft Office items. That is not, to my knowledge, what we came across does not include what you guys are already paying for EDOM. So that, we're also, so that includes that migration, and then that's supported with 365. So if there's ever any issues with any of the products, any of the users would just call us and we would assist with that. As for the cyber security portion, we've already got you guys over to the government cloud with that. And what it will do is it will put a couple of key things on every single computer. There are sixty, there's sixty endpoints across the city, including, I'm sorry, there's fifty-eight endpoints across the city plus four additional servers. You have two servers if they haul into an PD. So what it does is that it completely protects all of those devices for cyber security instances. So you're going to add a layer of advanced web protection, which is exactly what it sounds like. You guys got to attempt to go to a website. And if it's any sort of malware, it's not going to allow you to bypass and to get onto it. This has been a simple detection response. A lot of times in the past, people thought that antivirus was sufficient. Essentially, what this does is that it's an AI, artificial intelligence, that is going to be deployed onto every single device. It learns the patterns and malicious codes and the different vulnerabilities that people are trying to use to get into the environments. And with that, we have a twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five security team sitting behind those computers and monitoring the AI as well. So you have a multi-layer there, dark web vulnerability scanning. So every single email that's across the city is going to be put into our database. It's going to constantly monitor, make sure that none of the city emails, people, anything like that is going to get off of the dark web. Advanced email scanning, exactly what it sounds like. Speed filters. If Mayor Hayes sent me a PDF right now, I'm not going to be able to open the PDF until it gets right up in the cloud to make sure that there's no malicious code in the email. Cloud security and net management is included in that as well. Every single type of program that is in the cloud, whether it be your finance software or Microsoft 365, is monitoring all of that stuff. Get security awareness training, again, big requirement, and simulated fish testing. And like I said, twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five security monitoring by our team and quarterly security summary that we'll give to whoever, to whoever wants it. So not as our recommendation to just, like I said, fulfill the requirements by the controller, as well as to assist with the requirements that are getting put out from your insurance providers.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. As you can see there on page two, where the PD has two servers. This will take care of the body, main, and the body count servers. Two desktop, fire department, two desktop computers, four laptops, one tablet, eight more laptops on the way, three tablets coming. The city hall, six laptops, eleven desktops, airport, two desktops, water department, one sewer department, one, one at the shop. And four servers, two at the city hall, two at PD. And this is for the protecting shield, pricing adjusted, and including in your email archive and cyber network. This is very, very important. This is why the state of Tennessee is mandated. There's been several cities that has been hit cyber and has took a major hit in their, in their treasury. So this is why the state of Tennessee is mandated. And while each city will have to answer questions if it's not passed and approved implemented by July one. This just came down the pipeline less than three months ago. So we're working with Tennessee Municipal League and BC Three. And this is, I do recommend this. It is at the price of twenty-seven oh seven, fifty-eight monthly charge. It will go in effect July one for budgeting purposes and would be in good standing to the Controller's Office. Is there any questions for me or for Ms. Walton?
Is twenty-seven oh seven monthly, that you got that one time paid fifty-eight?
That's right, fifty-eight, pick seven, thirty-eight. Yes, I do.
Motion to approve.
A motion made by Vice Mayor Ken Dotson, second by Bill Linder. We will give this over to attorney or attorney general, get the contract, and we'll go from there. There's a motion in the second to approve. Any discussion?
This is one that is, I guess, recommended.
Recommended for Tennessee Municipal, yes.
Is there any other options?
I, I don't know of any. I'm sure, sure there is. But this is, they've done the background checks on these and are in good standing for Tennessee. That's one.
TML recommended.
Yeah, TML be recommended. To ask you, to answer you, I heard you say that we have a choice. I mean, if you want to be in good standing with the Controller's Office, then we need to get that. Got a motion in the second, any more discussion? Roll call, Ms. Phillips.
Augur Manheller?
Yes.
Augur Meda?
Yes.
Fascinero Dotson?
Yes.
Augur Malinder?
Yes.
Augur Cluck?
Yes.
Augur Manheller?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Walton. Do you have anything else to add or?
Uh, no, sir. Thank you guys so much. And Mayor Hayes, you have my address. You're more than welcome to give it to anybody on the council if they have any additional questions.
And I know that you're coming to Livingston to take a look at our servers and visit all of our buildings and things of that nature. So we'll see you in Livingston.
I'm sorry?
I said, we'll see you in Livingston when you come up.
Perfect. I'll see you guys in a couple of weeks.
And I hope your child has had a speedy recovery.
Thank you so much.
Good night. All right. Item number five, CDLs, Mr. Michael Hayes and Ms. Bridget Bennett.
Just want to give an update on our ELDT, ELDT CDL training. We started the program at the end of January. We started out with eight employees. Two of them has completed the program, have their CDLs in hand and out driving now. We've still got six waiting to go behind the wheel. That's basically them going out with themselves, working at the range and just driving out on the road. So hopefully we'll get them done pretty quick. We, Mrs. Casey Ducker came in and done a monitoring session and basically checked our paperwork and make sure we're doing it correct.
Where's he from, Michael?
He is from the state of Tennessee. Yes, he's from the state. So we came up here and he met with me and Bridget and went through our paperwork. Because each driver's got to have a file that Bridget keeps up with. And he looked over it, didn't find any findings at all. So he done our exit conference, and we had no findings, so we're on the right path there. We approximately saved thirty thousand dollars by doing this, doing this in-house versus sending the drivers out somewhere else to, to do this. We currently have twenty employees with city yells, four in the gas department, five in the water department, six in the street department, one at the park, two at the fire department, and two at the sewer plant. So just wanted to give everybody an update on what we're doing and how it's going.
Any questions for Michael or Bridget? Okay, Bridget, he left you out. Do you have something?
I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Michael. Item number six, property maintenance update, Mr. Christian Matzle.
Yes, sir. I want to give you an update on our property maintenance. And we'll start with our chapter one, Ms. Lanius. Since we've started this, we have two hundred and nineteen properties that have been in violation. We have two hundred and eleven properties that are now complies. Eight are still in violation. We have one property that's in litigation with the state, a state-owned property. We have two properties that have lemons placed on these properties. And five of these properties have been cleaned up by the town of Livingston. On our abandoned wreck, this amount of vehicles, we've had twenty-six in violation, and we've had twenty-six that are now complies. And on our chapter four slum, we've had fifteen structures that are considered a slum. We have three right now that are boarded up, considered to be safe. Four have been torn down by the property owners. And seven of these properties have been restored. And then on our chapter five, yards, we've had the zero.
Any questions for Mr. Matzle? I guess we're getting into the season, Christian, where the yards are going to have to start being mowed and.
Yes, sir, they're, they're starting to add up. There's actually some that we have put in violation today that did not make the list. But I think there was three properties after this came out that we've actually turned in also. So yeah, it's coming.
Thank you, Mr. Tim. Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Matzle.
Yes, sir.
Item number seven is replication of Prime Act Chapter Number Seven, House Bill fifteen forty-seven. And what you have in your packet, if you remember, a couple of months ago, the board decided to change the charter. Section one amends the part of the charter that says the Alderman will not get any compensation. That will be eliminated. And, and we will, our ordinance changed that where there will be compensation for the board of Alderman. Unfortunately, it will not take effect till twenty-four, June twenty-four. Next part, section two, amend, the city elections will be held on the first Tuesday of, instead of Wednesday. So just try to get a little bit more voter turnout, perhaps on Tuesday over Wednesday. And we have already approved this, but we will need to go back and approve again. Candidates elected in twenty twenty-four will send an office on the first day of September, following the election, and serve until June thirty of twenty twenty-eight. Thereafter, the successors will send an office first day of July, following the election. Candidates elected in twenty twenty-six will send an office in the first day of September, following the election, until June thirty, twenty-third. So you got two start rates. You got one that says currently, if you're elected in June, then you don't take office until September. And council felt that that was just way too long to take office. So at this certain date that they're talking about, that the General Assembly has a pass, they will start in July one. The election will be in June, first Tuesday in June. They will take office in July one. Let me see if I can, under, I think that's it. So we just have to have a motion for ratified, to ratify this and send it to fill out the paperwork that must be approved by two-thirds of this legislative body to continue on in the law. Motion made by Alderman John Cluck to make the ratification.
Second.
Second by Alderman Rex Dell. Any discussion? Roll call, vote, Ms. Phillips.
Augur Meda?
Yes.
Fascinero Dotson?
Yes.
Augur Malinder?
Yes.
Augur Cluck?
Yes.
Augur Manheller?
Yes.
Augur Manheller?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number eight, bids on a scoreboard for the ballpark in your packet. You will see, we did have a, we did advertise for bid for a scoreboard, new scoreboard at our city baseball field. The low bid came in at, for Diamond Nine Sports, seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars, which is about, we, about six thousand dollars of less than what we bid. So it came in.
Which part is this? Is it all part?
It'd just be one scoreboard, yeah. We just did one scoreboard. Yeah, Michael, you want to come up and add that? Let me go ahead and get a motion in the second. If we go ahead and get a motion in the second, then we have a discussion.
Motion accepted, low bid.
Motion Vice Mayor Ken Dotson to accept the low bid, Diamond Nine Sports, seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars. Our second. Second Alderman Bill Linder. Now Alderman Elder has a question. Can we all?
Which of those are we talking about, repeatable?
So we got six fields. First, we'll probably put, we will be putting this on field one, which is Little Lake Field, Elmo Swallows Field. All of our scoreboards are really old. We're having to do a lot of work to them each year. So this is something we probably need to try to do a little bit more often.
So what do you think in the future, you want to be the other field? Do they fit there in need of repair?
Yes, definitely. Like I said, we've got six, and every one of them are very old, probably, I don't know, fifteen, twenty years old, not older. So that is something definitely we need to start looking at replacing because they get really expensive just working on them. And right now, we've only got one company around that will fit that we can come and work on our scoreboards because they're so old.
More late, Diamond Nine?
Yeah, the, so the Diamond, the Diamond Nine scoreboard is actually a totally different scoreboard. It's a wireless scoreboard, LED, bright. I mean, it, it's, it's the most updated scoreboard that we could get. That's what everybody's going to the parts now.
How much did you put in this year?
Twelve thousand dollars. Well, the goal was during budget season, go ahead and put two or three in there. And hopefully we can do a little bit as we get there. At least do two next year. Bruce, to answer your question, to try to, in the next two or three years, have all of the scoreboards over there. That's, that's the goal. That's the goal.
How much did we use this thing on the average repairing and getting ready for ball season?
So, well, Kowal had the contract for many, many years. And they decided to get out of the scoreboard game about two or three years ago. Kind of left not only cities, but counties and school systems scrambling to even find someone to look at. So if you can find the parts, we, for maintenance, we usually budget about four or five thousand dollars a year for maintenance of the parts, if you can find the parts.
Mayor asked the thing. Our scoreboards are very old. And like he said, if you can find the parts, that's major, just fine.
Okay. Any other questions? We have a motion in the second. Roll call, Ms. Phillips.
Vice Mayor Dodson.
Yes.
Alderman Linder.
Yes.
Alderman Clough.
Yes.
Alderman Knight.
Yes.
Alderman Elder.
Yes.
Alderman Dale.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number nine is a landlord bid for the sewer plant. That one bid, thirty-eight hundred dollars. It was advertised. Recommend this Ag One Farmers Co., about thirty-eight hundred dollars.
Motion to approve.
Motion Vice Mayor Ken Dodson to the second.
Second.
Second, Alderman Rex Dell. Any discussion? All four of the motions, let it go to the same.
Aye.
Opposed outside, motion passed. Item number ten, we have with us today, Ms. Grass Roots Clanny, Ms. Amanda Mander.
Hello, hello. Thank you. Of course, we had our bid opening for our first two homes on April twentieth. Those bids came in within our budget. We have one bid for three fourteen Clark Street that came in at one eighty-five. And then we also have three eighty-three Hillham Highway that come in at one eighty-five as well. Both of these will be replacing mobile homes.
And the low bid, and this?
Yes. One of them is to the three eighty-three Hillham Highway. That is to Lakeside Builders out of Birdstown. And then the Clark Street, that is to Clark Construction out of Birdstown as well.
And you're recommending it?
Yes, I recommend both those bids. I've worked with both those contractors before, and they do good work.
Okay. Ms. Mander, your consultant has recommended these Clark Construction at a hundred and eighty-five thousand. And.
Lakeside.
Lakeside Builders at a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. This is grant money, we need to approve it though.
I'll make my own.
Motion made by Alderman Bill Linder.
Second.
Second by Alderman John Clough. Any discussion? Any questions for Ms. Mander? Roll call, Ms. Phillips.
Alderman Linder.
Yes.
Alderman Clough.
Yes.
Alderman Knight.
Yes.
Alderman Elder.
Yes.
Alderman Dale.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dodson.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mander.
I will give an update while I'm here. We do have some funding left over. Of course, you know, this is a five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant, so we do have some funding left over. So we will proceed down the list and do rehabilitation on other houses on the list. So I will be back again for approval.
Thank you, Ms. Mander. Item number eleven is the pickleball court bids. As you know, we've got happening going on in the city. We will, they are getting close to getting over to the ballpark to get a resistan tennis courts. If you've noticed, the fence has been took down. And also remember, we levied this money as well, this, we will have bid on May the fifteenth. I know we don't meet again in June, but what I would like to do is for the council to approve amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars and establish a little bid as it comes in on May the fifteenth. That way, we can go ahead and get started as quickly as they possibly can after the bids go in. So that is what I'm asking the council to do.
Is this going to replace the tennis courts?
Michael.
So we'll have three pickleball courts, and then we will have one full-size tennis court. So on one side will be three pickleball courts, and one side will be a tennis court.
What is a pickleball? David, it's very popular right now. It's probably the most popular sport going on anywhere. And.
That's a good deal, but what is it?
I can explain it. Like Bruce said, in parts, TRPA, a lot of cities are going to pickleball courts. It's basically like a version of tennis. If anybody's played it, but just, the court's smaller. And they, I mean. A lot of other folks play it. But yes, I mean, it's basically like tennis, David, but on a smaller court.
Smaller court.
Yes.
Smaller, smaller court and use a paddle.
Yes.
Black kingdom instead of a racket. And the ball is more like a wiffle ball than a tennis ball. It's a hard, light, and small.
I make a motion that we approve of funding not to exceed twenty thousand, excepting the low bid.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Ken Dodson to accept the seventy low bid not to exceed over twenty thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Bruce Elder. Any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Phillips.
Alderman Clough.
Yes.
Alderman Knight.
Yes.
Alderman Elder. Alderman Dale.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dodson.
Yes.
Alderman Linder.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number twelve, on this, the retail coach, we talked about it last month. I did bring that that would come out with DRC funds, but we went back and looked. That is to be paid out of ARPA and not the DRC funds. So I just need to entertain a motion to pay for the retail coach out of ARPA, American Rescue Plan funds instead of the DRC. Motion made by Vice Mayor Ken Dodson.
Second.
Second by Alderman Bill Linder. Any discussion? All four of the motions, let it go to the same.
Aye.
All opposed outside, motion passed. Last but not least, item number thirteen, City Pool and City Supervisors Pool will be opened around Memorial Day weekend. It's our goal. We have nine applicants that we hire, that we are considering hiring. I recommend that we hire them. Also, we want to say thank you for many years of service Mr. Bruce Lamb gave us at the City Pool.